We are all here. We're mostly here. We have our forum. So, welcome to this meeting. And we have established a quorum, but let's have a roll call vote, please.
Jean Brady.
Is your microphone on? Jean Brady, you're being asked if you're in attendance.
Hi there.
Okay. Thank you. Did you hear Jean's answer?
Yes. Joanne Harris.
Present.
Josie Martinez. Andrea Sanchez Muniz. Jeremy Landon.
Here.
Fernanda Cardenas.
Here.
Paul Stahl.
I like Jean's response. Hi there. Present.
Dispreet Kaur. Marcy Ins. Linda Narin. Chair, we have a quorum.
We'll begin our meeting with a... or next, we'll have a moment of silence, just silent meditation, to gather our thoughts, try to leave most of the outside world outside, remember why we're here. Thank you very much. I'm talking almost 100% to myself, because we're always running a million miles a minute. Our next item, approval of the minutes. There's a...
Mr. Chair, I wanted just to inform the board that in your packets that were distributed today in front of you, it's a revised set of minutes, the minutes that we sent out on Friday with a packet that we generally send out on Friday. We had to make some revisions and corrections. Those edits have been made, so the minutes that you have in front of you are the revised and final minutes. You made... there were primarily typos that we corrected in formatting.
Okay.
Second, Joanne Harris.
We have a motion for... Marcy, we have a second.
I second by Joanne Harris.
Questions or comments? If anyone would like a few more moments, I don't want to rush anybody by any stretch, All the motion items looked good to me, so that's the main thing I'm looking at. Question or questions on the motion for us for accepting the minutes? Good. Okay. Then, we have first, we have second, we've had discussion. If you could take us through roll call vote, please. Cynthia?
Hi.
Jean Brady? Joanne Harris.
Aye.
Josie Martinez.
Aye.
Andrea Sanchez Muniz. Jeremy Landon.
Aye.
Landa Cardenas.
Aye.
Linda Narin. Judy Cruz. Paul Stahl.
Aye.
Dispreet Kaur. Chair, we have a quorum. Chair, we have a quorum. Motion passes.
Thank you, Cynthia. I just couldn't hear. I apologize. It's my wife's complaint as well, that I don't hear her. We have next... and I want to mention that our trustee Linda Narin has joined us. Hi, Linda. Next, we have public comments. Cynthia, we have two people signed up, and we also have comments that have been submitted in writing. I'd like to be respectful of the citizens that have signed up, so we have a Ronald Lorton. Ronald, are you here? And we do have a three-minute time limit, so they've got... we've got that. If you could... do you mind coming up to the podium so we can hear you, if that's okay? Appreciate that. And you've got your little Jeopardy timer up there, too, so.
I think I'll be brief.
Hi, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Trustees, and members of the Naming Committee, and San Antonio Public Library staff and volunteers. My name is Ron Lorton, one of Grace Lorton's four children, and there's an Agenda Item Number 14 relating to her, and I wanted to thank the board for this opportunity to speak about the proposal, to name a room at the Thousand Oaks Branch in her honor. I think you've seen my letter, as well as been apprised of my comments at the meeting of the Naming Committee on August 6th, supporting this action, so I won't take much of your time today. But I would like to express on behalf of our entire family our gratitude for the time and consideration you have given to the proposal. We know how much Mom's volunteer work at Thousand Oaks for over two decades meant to her, and we appreciate the chance to bring it to your attention. And I truly believe this proposal would also recognize the important contributions made by all the many volunteers and inspire others to volunteer in the future. The San Antonio Public Library is a critical resource for our city, and we are glad that Mom was able to play a part in its life. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lorton. Next, Mr. Jack Finger. Mr. Finger?
Thank you for coming today. Good to see you again. You have your time over there?
Well, Mr. Chairman, other members of the board, for the record, my name is Jack M. Finger. I came by today because I want to inform you of a major problem that you have with your... one of your security supervisors. Yes. His name is Mr. William Shelton. A couple of weeks ago, I was in the library. I was using the computers on the first floor. Some gentleman, I apparently had a mental handicap of sorts, he started shouting outbursts in the library. Well, that obviously was a disturbance, and I informed the staffers about it, and they turned... informed some of the security people about it, and they eventually had some security people come over and talk to the gentleman about it. It seemed to take an enormous amount of time, but eventually they got somebody there. And I... while they were doing this, they... well, eventually, they let... they talked to the gentleman, but they allowed him to remain in his position where he was there. And I started, being the inquisitive person that I was, I started asking questions as to why the gentleman was allowed out to stay when he was obviously causing such a disturbance. Well, that's when Mr. Shelton came forward, and he said, "Well, sir, you're..." I don't think he was causing a disturbance, and you're the only one that was complaining." That was Mr. Shelton's words. Well, I in turn asked him how many people he needed to complain about the man's outburst before he and his colleagues would take action on it there. Well, he didn't have an answer for that. Instead, he just simply saw... thought that the man was not causing any outbursts, no disturbances at all, and as a consequence, he thought my complaint was illegitimate. Yeah. Well, I in turn talked to one of your library staffers at the time, and she said she would report him to your... his supervisors or to you, Mr.'s... Sazarsar, yes. So, I don't know if that ever happened, but quite frankly, you've got a problem if you have a security supervisor claiming that I in turn was the one causing the disturbance. Yeah, because that was his exact words. He thought I was causing the disturbance by merely mentioning the complaint through the proper channels here. I don't like that, and I think you guys need to do something about Mr. Shelton if he's hasn't been fired already. Thank you.
Do you have a comment? Do you have anything to add, sir?
Yolanda Rodriguez at 6923 Quail Branch submitted a comment on August 23, 2022. This is a comment referencing Agenda Item Number 15. Brook Hollow is on the agenda for HVAC, but I am still awaiting to hear about what's going on at Gera Library. I used to visit all the time, but it is too hot, and I know that poor staff is suffering from all those fends everywhere and mental people coming in and out. I see police there all the time. What is going on with Gera, and why aren't you telling us anything? Who is keeping them safe, and when will it be fixed? Also, I'm sorry to tell you, but there are stalkers in our community, and they are targeting library staff. At Petranco and Gera, and I heard about Mission. That video is a horrible shame. You want to spend money on the north side, but what about the west side? How can you let them suffer with no protection, then make them work in the heat? That's the end of that comment. The second comment is from Patricia Ledke at 3418 Blue Topaz, San Antonio, 78245, submitted a comment on August 24, 2022. Comment referencing Agenda Item Number 10. For Public Relations Committee, I have known Monica Garza Bustillos for seven years. I met her at Johnston Library, where I decided to join the library's book club, which she leads. She has led that book club since the beginning of its creation, and even during COVID, and still at present time. Since then, we have become friends, and I have learned that she loves her job, that there's nothing she would like to do, and she was happy to work at the library until a couple of months ago. She would talk to me about her job and what she was doing and what she would like to accomplish, and also, of all her volunteer work for the library, Monica is fully committed to her job. That's the end of that public comment.
Coming today? Move on to item number two. All right. I am correct. Reports from the Library Board Chair. So, just a reminder that today's meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube. And also, a friendly reminder about completing your Municipal Leadership Institute training. If you get a lot of spam emails, be careful not to think this one is spam. I did, and caught it a few days afterwards, but was able to do that, and it was very simple for me to do. So, just a reminder that if anyone has any questions on that, please let me or the staff know. And we already mentioned about the revised copy of the minutes that are in the packet. Can have any relevant reports from the trustees regarding any of their library activities? I feel like going to my left. Fernanda, do you have anything? Is there anything you'd like to share about any library-related activities that you felt were noteworthy?
Yes, I would like to give kudos to the Great Northwest Library for having more senior programming and for partnering up with the Great Northwest Neighborhood Association and opening its doors. The Great Northwest Association has a group called the Owls, and it is older adults that gather for book reading club, and instead of going to each other's homes, the library has welcomed them to have their book reading club there at the library, which was very exciting, very heartwarming, that our community and our libraries are integrating together. Thank you.
I was happy to attend that public meeting of the Naming Committee at the Thousand Oaks Branch Library that Linda led, and it was a short meeting, it's to the point, and it was very nice. And the library, I really liked that library. I don't think I've been in there, and all the parking space, oh. And then, the other thing is, last meeting, they talked about capturing seniors' attendance to different type of activities that the library has. And so, I registered for a session that they're going to have, I think it's tomorrow, at Cortez Library. I said I thought it'd be something funny, but when I did, online, it said adults, and then next to it a comma or semicolon, and it said senior, which I thought was very
Marcy, anything you'd like to share?
A couple of things. One is that I did go to the event at Hardman Library, Barbara Kiyakowski does a fantastic job there, but I cannot tell you what a fantastic event it was, and all the details, and all the people that were involved. And I was really pretty impressed with the younger kids, you know, the teenagers who were involved. They were really into it, and, you know, and they made the little kids and all, everybody's so happy, and the apartment was packed, and so many parents were there. You know, I just... Barbara does such a fantastic job at that branch, and this was evident when I was there. I had tears in my eyes, I was devastated. I really did. I got tears when I saw how happy, you know, coming out of the pandemic and all that school going through, to come to that library and get this kind of experience for free. And it might have been, I don't know, it might have been bigger a couple of years ago, but I think this was bigger than I thought it would be, so it was very inspiring just to see we were coming back this strong. I also went to the meeting at the Encino Branch Library with the branch manager for their friends meeting, and they are coming back, too, and they're very excited. Michelle does a really good job over there also, and they... sadly, their president is moving away, and she's already checked out the new place where she's moving to, the library they have there. It's a very nice library there, but we're going to really miss her, because she's done a great job in this part of... And they are, I think that once they get the playground again, and that's going to be real quick, I think, and the food forest, I think it's going to make big changes out there, because the roads are completed. It took me... I used to hate going out there because it was so hard, the bulk of construction, but now I can get out there pretty easy and back, and I'm real happy about that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did anybody hear anything I said? I'm so sorry. And I also want to bring up that I did spend an hour listening to a TPR recording on book banning and with Dale. It was a guest speaker there. And I learned a lot in that hour. I mean, I really realized, I didn't know that a lot of this book banning was just politics. It's not the parents that are doing this. I wasn't aware of that. And I thought they had Dale get a really good job talking about the process, and if you have a complaint, how to get through it. And the woman was talking about that different... there's so many... public libraries are public. We have everybody, and we have everybody with different needs, and they try to fit the person with the book, and they've been highly trained. This is a hard degree to get to be librarian, and they know what they're doing, and let's just leave it in their hands. And I'm hoping that, you know, some of the politicians were listening to this, because I realized this was just... it's more of a politically-driven, you know, situation, you know? So, I appreciated all your comments and what you had to say, because I hope a lot of people were listening. Thank you. I went to Young Pegasus. I can't remember all that I did. Okay. So, it was wonderful. It was outdoors, in a beautiful setting, and which I think is very appropriate under the conditions with all the COVID. The parents were so proud, and the little kids, the kids were so cute, and we cursed the... we got the booklet, and I've gone home and gone through all the poems in there, and some very good work in there, so. And my friend Jeremy, you know, I'll let him tell you, but anyway, but I enjoyed it. I enjoyed it a lot. I always try to go to that, and I'm glad I did.
Libraries, but what stood out was the work that we did for the MacRillo's Branch book sale a couple of weeks ago, and I remember now all the hard work that goes into organizing it, manning it while customers are there, and then also the brutal work of breaking it down and deciding what are we going to keep, what are we going to get rid of, and these wonderful, wonderful ladies that have been there for a long, long time, packing those books into the car to go take them to Half Price Books to see what we can get for those things. And then, last week, MacRillo's had their Friends Group meeting and came back together to talk about the book sale, and also, another big topic at the meeting was, how do we get a new generation of people coming in to become friends? What do we do to spark that enthusiasm that these longtime friends have had, to bring in fresh blood and to be excited about all the things that the Friends Group does and how our library so depends on the funds generated by the Friends Group? So, I was just so impressed, once again, by the commitment of the Friends Groups and how they work and keep a single focus on making sure that they continue their support of all programming for libraries.
So, I visited my branches that are open, and also went over to the... to Landa Branch Library, just to go by, had a chance to speak with the Friends Group there at Landa. They were really great. Really, really great to speak with and to have a conversation with. Also attended... I'm also on one of the planning committees on the west side, so they love using Bazan Library for those meetings, and so I was there for that one. They were very grateful, thankful the planning department at the city was present. They said that Bazan staff is always very accommodating. And then, just staying around, staying active, also visited the Young Pegasus event. It was a great event. I shared with Dale. I think it was wonderful to have it outside. It turned out to be a really great... a great night, and met quite a few really amazing librarians that we have in the system. So, that was great, and yeah, that's most of what I did. And I don't think it's much of a... of something not to share, but unfortunately, this is my second-to-last meeting with you all, so after my term on the September 31st, then y'all will likely have a new trustee joining y'all. So, but I've had a really great time in a year with you all, but well, by my last meeting be a year. So, lots of great work.
And yeah, the Young Pegasus was nice. I don't know how they ordered up those breezes at the right time, because it was so hot before during the day, but it turned really nice as the day went on, so that was a lot of fun. Linda, do you have anything to report? Would you like to share?
My life has been very complicated lately, but I was... would like to comment on one of the comments we had earlier, the letter that commented on how the north side has all these wonderful libraries and the south side doesn't. I think people need to visit other libraries than their own, because I... my area is on the north side, and I will tell you, you know, I have libraries that don't have quiet rooms. They don't have special rooms for the teens. They don't have... they don't have playgrounds. You know, they have air conditioners that go out of whack, and they have to close down for afternoons sometimes, and other people need to understand that south side and west side, they have nice libraries. You know, they've got Memorial, they've got... they've got, you know, Mission, they've got all these things, and they don't understand that when my people from my side go over there, they go, "Why? Why can't we have all this stuff?" And it's just, that's the way it is, you know? But other people need to not think that the north side gets all the money, because they don't. They don't. And that's my opinion.
Okay. And Jean has mentioned, does not have any comments. Dispreet, if you have anything that you wanted to share?
No, thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you, trustees, for those updates. Move on to item number four, San Antonio Public Library Director's Report for July 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, before we start there, so I just... I leapt right into asking Dispreet if she had any comments, and I forgot to make mention for the record that our trustee Dispreet Kaur has now joined us virtually.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can proceed now. Under Director's Report, I have a couple of items I would like to highlight, but first of all, I believe, well, yes, last board meeting, the July board meeting, you met our new Executive Secretary, Cynthia Lopez. I want to acknowledge her again. And we do have a new Administrative Assistant, Sidney Young. She's seated in the back. Both are new members to the Director's Office, so I just wanted to acknowledge them and their work. So, it's been pretty... it's been busy, pretty busy. Last board meeting, I was not able to attend, because I was in Ireland attending the International Federation Library Association. It was a wonderful opportunity in Dublin, Ireland. I got to meet in person many colleagues throughout the country, colleagues from Barcelona, from Brazil, from Australia, from Denmark, from all over the world, and it was wonderful to be engaged in various conversations regarding what public libraries are doing throughout the world, and they're experiencing the same challenges that we're experiencing. And I'm really impressed with the organization, IFLA for short, because of the forward-thinking work. I did want to share, I don't think I've shared, the Public Libraries Manifesto, which was approved by the organization, which talks about the importance of public libraries. So, I will share that with the board either via email. I don't think I've done that. I can't recall for sure, but that was... that's a wonderful piece that, again, validates and emphasizes the value of libraries throughout the world, and we serve a common mission of improving communities and empowering communities, so I just wanted to share that with you. I've attended two budget community meetings, the first one District 10, District 6, and District 8 at the John Igo Branch Library. The District 10, I was very impressed. It was very well-attended. Lots of folks showed up. There were very little questions for libraries in the District 10. Budget Town Hall meeting, I did get a citizen come up to me to thank me for the fact that we still offer hard-print books, that she loves hard-print books, and that she hopes we would never go all digital. So, that was interesting. And lastly, I just want to alert the board and invite the board that on Tuesday, next Tuesday, August 30th, the Library Department will present its proposed budget, as proposed by the city manager, to the City Council at 2:00 p.m. It's in the... formerly the Media Room. We'll give you the actual location. You're invited to attend. You're invited to attend. This is where I will review the proposed budget by the City Manager for the Library Department. Vice Chair, Just Breach Corr will represent the Library Board of Trustees and will deliver a message on behalf of the Library Board at that time. That's all I have for now. I'd be happy to respond to any questions that you may have, either in the written report that's included in your packet or the items that I covered with you verbally.
Any questions or comments on Ramirez's report? Okay, thank you very much, Ramirez. Move on to item number five, Budget Report for July 2022.
Hi, I'm here to be one of the board members and board chair. I'm here just to provide y'all with a very brief update for the July 2022 operating budget of the library. So this does start on page 67 of the PDF if you're online or it's on green printed paper in front of you. So at the end of July, 83% of the fiscal year had elapsed. And bottom line, the fund, we have spent 83%, including encumbrances, or 80% without them. So as I reported last month, the, we're slightly behind on spending, but this is going to be mainly due to timing issues. The major category is capital outlay, so there are some, you know, shipping delays. There's some just delays out there due to, you know, COVID and other things that are happening. So you'll see that that category is only at 57%, but we will work with the city budget office and finance to ensure that those funds are either encumbered this year and carry forward to next year for, for spending. So we do have some personnel savings due to vacancies, but we're able to utilize those for other system needs. That's basically my report, but if you guys have any questions on the detailed report in your packet, I'll take them now.
Curious, are we seeing any challenges with any of the pricing increases from vendors? And is that causing any, I would say, major challenges or even?
Not major challenges. Like I said, fortunately, we do have some, you know, savings in other categories, but we are seeing some increases in quotes that we're, you know, what we're getting. But nothing that's, that's, you know, a major red light or anything.
And on, and on the capital expenditures, for the capital budget, no, no issues on carry forward to next year with those types of monies?
No. I mean, normally we work, like I said, with budget and finance and we submit memos and details and, you know, explanations on why we need to carry those funds forward. So we'll be going through that process in the next month.
There was a significant difference from last, the last budget that we received in the remaining budget for alarm and security service. Why was there such a big jump, I guess, in that item?
We have had some, in this category, intrusion systems. So we have, I've got a couple of items detailed out, but we'd like, Carver, we need to have their intrusion system updated. Maverick needs a new fire alarm panel. Bazan is needing a door access. So there's just items that come up.
Okay. Yeah, it was just like a $10,000 difference in a, in a month's time.
Yeah, that could, that could be the fire alarm panel.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a comment. I was listening to the City Council talking about what to do with the surplus money from CPS and one of the City Council people said, well, why don't we create cooling centers? And I thought, do they not know about libraries? So somebody needs to inform them that we have cooling centers already.
Can I ask one more question? Last one, computer software maintenance. We went from 144,000 positive last month to this month being $42,000 negative. How, that's a way bigger jump than the 10,000 from fire, so I'm interested in that.
Yes, that's the payment that we make. It's an annual payment for our ILS system, which is the Integrated Library System where all the patron records and books are stored. So that, that was the payment for that.
Okay, well, I guess was it not like an expected one or?
It's expected. We just don't, we don't set up a PO at the beginning of the year to encumber those funds and normally it pays out towards the last.
Oh, okay.
Couple months of the year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dollar amount at 43. You feel comfortable absorbing that throughout the year?
Yes.
And Andrea, we have another trustee that has joined us. I'm saying that for those that are virtual. Welcome, Andrea. Does anybody else have any other comments or questions for Gabby? Okay. Thank you, Gabby.
Thank you.
Next, we have our item six, Report from the Executive Committee. As Chair of that committee, we met on August 16th to set this agenda. Item number seven is Report from the Budget Committee, an information item. Just Breach? And, and she's on mute. And if she doesn't come off mute, I will say that Kathy's going to be providing a report.
Yes, I'm fine.
That's okay, thank you, Just Breach.
Okay, um, yes, the Budget Committee did meet and Kathy is going to provide an update. I will say that overall, we're very pleased with the funding that was provided for the library. The city continues to provide support for all of the great work that we're doing. But as I always say, we should continue to advocate for the library even when we're not in a bond or budget cycle. So I will never stop giving that message to trustees. And Kathy, I'll let you provide an update.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Just Breach.
Or I'm supposed to say hi there, right? No? Okay. So the Budget Committee met on August 15th, as was mentioned before. This was just a few days after the City Manager proposed the budget, the previous week. As Just Breach mentioned, there are some very significant increases for the library in the budget that the City Manager has proposed. And all of this is leading up again to September 15th, which is when City Council will take final action on the budget. In terms of significant improvements, we did send out a detailed email to the board, so I won't go through all those details again because I know we kind of have covered it in a couple of different ways. But I will just mention that overall, with all the improvements to the library's operating budget, an almost $5 million increase is proposed. So again, significant increases for the library. The headline, I would say, that we spent some time talking about at the Budget Committee is the $1.5 million proposed increase to the Books and Materials Budget, which was the board's number one priority and which actually, the request was for 1 million, but 1.5 million was actually proposed. That completes a five-year collection development plan two years early. So that was a very big vote of confidence, I feel like, for investment in the library system. And among the staff, we kept saying, is that a typo? But it wasn't. So it was really great. And many, many capital projects, deferred maintenance projects, which were included in that detailed email. So in addition to that, the Budget Committee talked about next steps and then also the board's strategy is just, Breach just alluded to, and there is an action item later on your agenda to kind of get into those details. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
So the Facilities Committee did meet and?
Good afternoon, Board. So I'll give you a few updates from our Facilities Committee meeting that when we met on August 10th. There is a action item that'll come up in a little while in the board meeting that we discussed at the Facilities Committee, but we also had some project updates to go over. First one will be the Cortez Branch Library. As you can see, that one, we are scheduled to close on September 6th, as was approved by the board on June 22nd. The equipment delivery is still scheduled to come in, in mid-September, so they're going to start demo on September 6th and then they'll be ready for when the new equipment arrives in mid-September to install. The interim services are going to be provided at the Ramirez Community Center and you can see the hours there, Monday through Friday, 2 to 5, and then Saturday, 10 to, 10 to 5. And the branch will be reopening in the fall as soon as all the work is complete. So the next one would be the Westfall Branch Library. So that was a deferred maintenance project that we started back in March, I believe it was. And we started with just doing flooring replacement and simple, simple deferred maintenance stuff, and then we obviously discovered we had asbestos in the building. So that delayed a lot of things, but we are back in track again and we've got some photos to show of the interior that you'll be able to see. We are anticipating reopening in the fall of 2022, in the next, in the next month or so I would suspect. And interim services being provided at the Granado Center. A couple of photos, so here you can see that we had to rebuild the front desk. You've got all new carpeting in there. The children's area, we put some new flooring in for the children to plan. It's LVT tile, so they can get all nice and messy in there and it'll clean up nice and neat. And here's a couple of before and after pictures of the old carpet and paint and then the new carpet and paint. It's a drastic difference in there. Right now, the staff is restocking all the bookshelves and everything to get those moving. The contractor should actually be complete by the end of this month and then we'll be putting computers back on the tables and getting everything ready to reopen sometime in September. Next one is Memorial Branch. So that one again is the bond project, $3.3 million with a $25,000 private donation. That project is progressing along well. We're still waiting on a substantial completion date from the contractor, but for that project, we are looking to be complete in fall or very early winter of this year. The Memorial Branch Library will not be used as a voting location for the fall elections. That was determined already. So here's a quick, couple of quick photos. This is the Clear Story Window Area where we used to have those murals that would, the Women of the West Side murals hung there. This is a graphic that the, a vinyl graphic that the architects designed for us to put up there, so I just wanted to kind of give you that little sneak peek, sneak peek of what the overall building is going to look like. Next one then is Las Palmas. Las Palmas Branch that is getting ready to start as soon as Memorial closes, we'll be planning on, or I'm sorry, as soon as Memorial reopens, we will plan on closing Las Palmas. Las Palmas will be an election day site and a early voting sites beginning October 24th to November 8th, so that will satisfy District 5. It was going to either be Memorial or Las Palmas, so. And we'll be starting construction either fall or late, late winter, or early winter of this year, and then that'll be finished hopefully by next summer. And then the last one is the main Solidad project. As you may have noticed on the way in, they're starting to put the sidewalks in, so we've got some nice red brick sidewalk that's going in. And then they're going to eventually finish off those lanes and get that, they're supposed to sometime in August be actually transferring the traffic, have, they should have all the lanes complete near the library, so they'll transfer traffic to the inside lane of Solidad, so we'll be running along. We won't have to go through that big dip to get into the parking garage next time. So we also have the construction report is in your packet if you have any other questions or any other comments.
I do want to add that we were very excited that Mark has a team now and he is no longer solo, so we're really excited to meet his team at the, at the meeting.
So that's helping a lot, yes. Thank you. Oh, and Andrea, just to mention, you had mentioned a couple of months ago, because we talked about we're putting in the bottle, bottle fill water stations?
Yeah.
And you had mentioned about how the cleaning the filters, we have talked to our maintenance people about making sure that that's, that's on the regular schedule now that we're putting those in a lot of places. Yeah. Thank you.
Oh, Mark, can I ask you a quick question? On Memorial, I know we're talking about bond here, but I think one of the things that I worry about is with the roof replacement that's going to happen there. I guess, I don't want the community members to like get scared and think, oh, man, we just finished, what's about to happen again? And I don't think they know right now, of course, that it's not going to need a closure or that's what the, right? That's, that's.
Yes, for the re-roof, yes.
So I guess I just want to make sure before Memorial even opens that we start to talk.
Sure that we will plan some sort of community, once, once the budget is finally approved, we'll, we'll be working on a communication plan for that, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, I did have a quick question. We did have a public comment asking about the Gera HVAC and I know that that project is stated to be expected to be completed December 2022. Is that still, do you feel that's still on track? Is there anything that could?
That phase of the project, yes. We're actually, the equipment, and I put together a little timeline in case, yes, but we actually ordered the HVAC equipment back in February of this year and it's just coming in, in September, so, and we're working with the branch staff on, you know, coordinating the contractor work in there, yeah. So that work is going to start up in the next few weeks. That one fortunately doesn't require a closure. If the $600,000 project is approved in the next budget, that part of the project will require a closure, but we'll bring that back, you know, next year as we get, as that piece moves along, so.
And as part of the communication plan, is there any information there at the, at the branch on that project for?
They do have some flyers, I believe, that they've put out there, but we'll check with the communication teams.
Make sure that that's clear and posted clearly for people. Great. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Other than to reemphasize the point about our communications plans, so I'm pleased that the board is on top of that as well. That is something that we really talk about to make sure we have, we have a very comprehensive communication plans, not only external to the public, but also to internal. So the roof replacement for Memorial should be seamless, right, Mark? In terms of the work that we're doing there, so by the time we reopen, hopefully by December, we're keeping our fingers crossed, the whole project will be complete. But it might be a good idea to communicate also proactively to the community and we provide monthly updates that the roof that's being proposed in the budget will be also included as part of the project, so it'll be a continuous project.
And also at Gera, I do want to mention that we do have a lot of, we have spot coolers that we've deployed out there and we've deployed a couple extras, you know, because of the extra heat this summer, so that's trying to, trying to help staff out as much as possible, so.
I apologize, I just thought of a question before you sat down, I'm so sorry. We haven't gotten any complaints from residents, patrons.
For?
For Gera Library, right?
For which library?
For Gera.
Gera? Complaints from the neighbors?
No, right. Okay.
Item number nine, a report from the Naming Committee. Linda?
The Naming Committee did meet on Saturday, August 6th at Thousand Oaks Library for public input on the naming possibility there. And then we also met ourselves on August 16th, last Tuesday, and we will have a recommendation to make as an action item. Okay, thank you.
On to item number 10, a report from the Public Relations Committee. And that is Jean's Committee, she's virtual. Jean, are you there?
Jessica is going to give that report.
So Jessica's going to give a report. Thank you, Jean.
Good afternoon. The Public Relations Committee met on August 2nd and I'm going to provide an update on what was provided to the committee. The first is a update about our live streaming at the library for our events and meetings. You will have noticed some cameras around this room and that is our new system to broadcast to YouTube, the Library Board Meeting. We're using the system for other events such as Young Pegasus, the Naming Public Committee meeting, so we're rolling it out as we're able to. It's a brand new system and so we're working on procedures and how best to get it rolled out and consulting with city attorneys as needed regarding public comment and so forth. So to date, the slides is seven, but we actually added an event since then, so we've actually had eight events since we've started rolling them out and a little over 1,000 views, which is very promising. Our next slide is talking about our media mentions and our publicity value. So we are at 103 media mentions, which is down 45 mentions from June, although you'll, you'll come to see that this, these mentions are up and down depending on what's going on versus holidays, various initiatives, so you'll holidays, various initiatives, so you'll see it ebb and flow. But this essentially demonstrates to you the amount of money the library would have spent to receive this sort of media, and instead it was earned media, so we did not have to pay for it, which is excellent work on our team. So the next slide is talking about various stories that you may have seen in the media. Our team is constantly pitching stories to all the news outlets, radio, print, online. So what we highlighted for you today is our summer reading club, which was very nicely picked up through various media channels. You'll see the first story. Libraries as cooling centers, it was hot this summer, it continues to be hot. So the library is a major resource in the community for cooling centers, so we do get rolled into publicity once, when that happens. And then the last is our Freedom to Read campaign, which took place at the Bazan Branch And the next two slides essentially just share with you our marketing report. The main takeaway here is that we have increases that are happening for the library. We did have a net audience growth. We did also have engagement that is just continuing to increase. We have staff members who are focused on working on engagement with the community. So that is, just to show you, this slide and the next slide will just demonstrate through a chart the two. And then the following slide talks about social media. We did have, on each of the platforms, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, we had our top social media posts. The first one, which has caught a lot of attention, is plant swap. One of our branch libraries, the Sems Branch Library, has started this really innovative program. Essentially, you bring your plant and you swap it out with another community member, and it's been really popular. It was a hot topic, a part of our, the committee meeting, and so we've seen a lot of traction on that. So that's been something that has gotten a lot of attention. But also Twitter, Instagram, you know, depending on what's hot and trending, our team is on top of that. The Little Miss, which took traction, it seemed like it was introduced, and then quickly everybody jumped on, and then it just fizzled out. So our team is on top of it to catch these trends and try and incorporate it and bring library up into this area. So this is just a sampling of what we're doing. And the next slide, this is new information, but it's very timely. We just received word yesterday. The Sappel, the San Antonio Public Library, our Instagram and Facebook accounts are now officially verified accounts, which is basically a badge of honor. When you come to our Facebook and Instagram accounts, you'll see a little check mark. It'll just show that we are the real deal, and it just really provides some added, just impact for the library that we are verified. And we are the first city department to become verified, so I, big props to our team led by Scott, who actually figured out a way how to do this and get it done. So next is Twitter, so that's our next goal, is Twitter. And that's the report, available if you have any questions.
You should probably get ready to start billing out your time to help others get that badge.
I'm just curious what we can do to help Sappel get verified on Twitter. Like, is there anything as board members we can do with our social media accounts? Sorry, I could jump out.
I'm pulling double duty, running the livestream, but not really. The verification process on most of the social media platforms, including Twitter, is more about verifying your identity as an organization, and so it's about providing news media reports and making sure that your account is categorized in the proper category as an organization or a nonprofit or government entity. And so it, you know, requires us to go in and make sure that all of our credentials are up to date, and then also to provide a set of documents. So we have a liaison at Twitter who is helping us through that process right now, and it's just a matter of time before they kind of fit us into the right box and get us verified. But it should be relatively soon. We were proud to get verified on Instagram and Twitter, which was more of a process than it should have been, but we checked it off. I appreciate the offer of help, though.
Of course, yes. Scott, another question?
Yeah. So can you go back to the first slide, the one about the livestream? So I guess I really wanted to note on this, one of the first things that I talked to Paul about and to Ramiro was, you know, when I first joined the board, there at the time was only WebEx availability for folks to see the meetings, and I really thought, you know, the way City Council sees, can share their meetings through Facebook, through YouTube, through different avenues, is really important because, you know, as a local government, as a municipality, they have a, you know, obligation to share that information with the community. And as libraries, I feel like that is more so our obligation than any other department. And so, you know, I made the recommendation that we bring that forward as a board, and I was told that we would do that internally. While I still think in the future the board should consider bringing that forward as a policy and codifying it so that it is something that is long-term always and not something that, you know, could sway back and forth or find different, or change. I do think it's really important for us to recognize that's 1,000 more people seeing our content, seeing our events, seeing our board meetings that otherwise would not have, and that's only from seven live streams. And I think that's really, really important as we continue thinking about how we grow as a system. I think it's really important to continue doing things like this, and I think it really shows how much work Scott has put into this and the rest of the team. But I think it's really important just to recognize this. We went so far with social media, and I think this only builds upon that. And so thank you for continuing to do this, and again, I hope the board in the future considers finding a way to make this a policy that we continue to adhere to.
Well, thank you, Jeremy, also for advocating. And I wanted to let you know that it's now a practice, it may not be a policy, and certainly there can be a future discussion regarding that, but we made a decision because we listened to the board, feedback, and we believe in transparency. We made a decision, even though, if I stand correctly, or if I'm stating correctly, we didn't have to go to offer the board meetings livestream. We made a decision because there was a commitment from the entire board that we wanted full transparency, and we wanted the community to be able to tune in and learn about the operations and the decision-making about the library. So I'm just reiterating what you stated and acknowledge the fact that you advocated for it, so thank you.
I did, was wondering, I think I brought this up a couple years ago, within the decade, for, you know, for the social media efforts of the library, do we have any, are there any, are there any, you know, teen interns or, I know even within my company a few years back when we were trying to get, go into those areas, it was very clear that, you know, we were behind on our knowledge and our savvy for how to do that, and we got input from other areas that really leapt us in front. I'm just curious if there's, are there any interns involved in that, are any teens involved assisting with that, or how does...
We did have a summer intern who was embedded in the marketing, in the communications team, who did share with us the up-and-coming and the current trends. We also have a very, a team who is, and a team member who is very focused on social media, and so they are keeping up to date on trends and just how to grab attention in certain ways. See that the library's social media feeds are performing very well compared to our peer departments, and so our team really does do a great job. We do also reach out to our branches as various initiatives are taking place, and we, you'll see that we have content from others. I think today there was a, we posted a Facebook post from somebody who took an awesome photo of them, them and their child, or a child at the library. So we do very much try to keep up to date, and if not, maybe more creative, so that we can be sure we don't fall behind. Because social media evolves one day to the next, just like the Little Miss campaign, that happened in a matter of, like, weeks, and it's gone. And our team was well-versed enough to be in there, to get into it, get us quickly and moved nimbly, and we were part of it, so.
Great, well, as good as it's going, I still think the challenge is out there to continue to improve, and as you say, it's a very dynamic environment, and so I'm really proud of the work that the team is doing, and glad for those small wins and the successes, so that's good. Any other comments or questions before we move on?
Does the library have a TikTok?
TikTok, we do not.
No, and actually, TikTok is not a sanctioned social media site for the city of San Antonio yet. It's something that our Communications Engagement Department has looked into, but right now it's not something that we're allowed to do as a department.
Good question. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Jessica. Moving on to item number 11, a report from the Ad Hoc Board Policy Committee, and that, if I could speak for Jean, that committee did not meet this reporting period. Is there anything you wanted to comment on that meeting? Okay. We'll move on to item number 12, a report from the Friends of the San Antonio Public Library.
Hi there. So the main activity for the Friends in this past month has been the kickoff of our Arts and Letters Awards campaign, as I mentioned last meeting. Just a reminder, the ceremony is Sunday, November 13th, at the Mission Branch Library at 2:00 p.m., and we hope to see all of you there. Nominations are due September 12th, and you can either go online and enter that way, there's a link on the homepage of the Friends website, or you can mail your entry into us at our PO box, which is also listed there on the website. So, and just to remind you, we have expanded our categories to represent the diversity of applicants we've had. So we have the categories of artistic merit, arts education, public leadership, young artist, or we call the rising star, and then the legacy award. So unfortunately, we have yet to have any entries in the young artists, so if you know any young aspiring artists who have started to make a name for themselves, please, please feel free to enter them, because we do want to recognize those people. It used to be very difficult under the old criteria because they didn't have a body of work because they're just starting out. So we want to encourage our young people to keep doing what they're doing so well. Also, coming up next month, we will be having officer training workshops. This will be the first time we have been able to do this in over two years, which we sorely need, and it's going to be wonderful. We're doing one here at Central Branch, and then we're going to be doing one at Parman to help all of the officers have an easy access. Then also on September 18th is our upcoming board meeting, which everyone is invited to. That will be at Parman Library. And then we are also starting the nomination process to fill our board for 2023, so if you know anybody who's a member of the Friends and you think they would be an addition to our board, please feel free to contact me, and I will put them in touch with the nominations committee. So that's what's going on with the Friends. Any questions? Yes, Linda? The bookseller is doing well, actually, and our online book sales are doing very well. We have already made over $11,000 this year in our online sales, and that was as of the end of July. So we're actually ahead of where we expected to be, which is wonderful. Our new team running the bookseller and the online, they're doing an excellent job. Had a little hiccup because our bookseller manager had, was out for a knee replacement surgery, but that's okay. We had some wonderful volunteers step in, so the doors did not close, and so they're still selling books all the time. Is that great? Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for John?
Thank you.
Great, all right, thank you very much, John. Next, item number 13, a report from the San Antonio Public Library Foundation. Amy?
Good evening. So I'm happy to report that our Katrina Ball invitations are completely finished with the design process. If anybody wants to see, I have a little mock-up that was just finished this morning for a sneak peek, but you should be seeing those next week in your mailboxes. The latest excitement around Katrina Ball is about a budding partnership with Johnny Hernandez and his group as they are planning what they're now calling Spiritlandia. You may have seen that on the news or know about it. They're doing a parade, they're really trying to make what used to be Muertos Fest bigger with a huge parade and all sorts of things. They are unintentionally mirroring our focus, which for our sub-theme this year for Katrina Ball was the Alabrihe, and they have huge costumed characters, like the big Chinese dragons that you see in the parades. They have the huge Alabrihe that they are, that they have coming for those things. So we are sort of the kickoff to that, and we are meeting with them regularly to talk about different ways that we can partner and share publicity and just really amplify each other's events, so we're super excited about that. Our Literary Luncheon sponsor package should be out shortly. That is a completely different list, for the most part, than Katrina Ball, so that event, as you know, is in December at the Redberry Estate with author Cris Bojalian, and we are simultaneously planning the two events, so that's a lot of fun. Our Born to Read program has recently expanded to include most of the pediatric cardiology clinics in town. We have a new board member who is a pediatric cardiologist, and she's really spearheading that. We are very excited about that as well, to get those books into the hands of more kiddos. So we do plan to hit our goal of 15,000 books given away this year in that program. Literacy Caravan, as I said last month, continues to plan for this year's round of pilots, which will hit many of your districts. I mentioned them last time, but those pilot, that pilot program will run from October to April, we will be working with. And we are also in our budgeting process. We do have a couple of openings that we are working to fill on our team as well, and hopefully we will be able to fill those with really great people with adding, you know, some new incentives through our budgeting process. Does anybody have any questions, particularly about Katrina Ball? Nope? Okay. Thank you very much.
Coming more real now that you've got a draft of invite that you got this morning. I mean, I know we're all excited, great event, and wonderful. So thanks for everything. And thank you also, John, if I didn't mention, thanks for your updating, for your volunteer network. Move on to item number 14, receive a recommendation from the naming committee regarding a request to add the name Gracie Lorton to the meeting room at Thousand Oaks Branch Library and take appropriate action. Linda?
As we said before, the naming committee did have a public input meeting at Thousand Oaks this last month, and we also had our committee meeting. And the committee is now recommending to the board that we have an additional public input meeting be held at Thousand Oaks Library with the usual notice. We only had two people sign up to talk at this last one, and we feel like we want more input from the neighborhood people, and that's what we're hoping for. And after that, then we'll have another recommendation about what we're going to do with it finally. And that's the recommendation.
Great, so this is an action item. Do we have an entertaining motion?
So does the motion to come in another collective meeting for making decisions?
That's the recommendation.
That's the recommendation?
So if there's a board member that'd like to make a motion to entertain that, the
Make a motion to approve the recommendation from the naming committee, as read.
So any discussion on this? I was at that meeting as well, and yes, it was, it was small. It was early, what, 10 o'clock in the morning, I believe it was, right when the library was opening, and I was hoping for a few more people. We did get some good comments, but, so I would certainly be in agreement of getting more, another one to get even more feedback from the community. So we have a motion... So we have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any comments or questions on the motion on the floor? Okay. So Cindy, if you could take us through a roll call vote, please?
Jean Brady? Joanne Harris? Josie Martinez? Andrea Sanchez Muniz? Jeremy Landin?
Aye.
Fernanda Cardenas?
Aye.
Just Breke Cor?
Turn muted, Just Breke. Try again, Just Breke, we can't hear you.
Aye.
There we go.
Marcy Ints?
Aye.
Linda Narren?
Aye.
Judy Cruz?
Aye.
Paul Stahl?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Linda, once again, for leading us there. Move on to item number 15, provide an update on the Brook Hollow Branch Library's HVAC replacement project schedule and take appropriate action. So this is an action item, led by Kathy.
Okay, thank you. So you'll recall that Brook Hollow Branch Library has a heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system project funded at $300,000 that was set to begin with a closure of the branch that the board had previously approved of September 6th. Unfortunately, we have experienced a very significant delay in getting the equipment, and therefore the project can't start, obviously, until we have the major HVAC components. So we went to the Facilities Committee at their last meeting to have a discussion about this unusual situation, and we can go to the next slide, Edward. So in short, because we won't be able to begin the project based on the board's previous closure date that was approved, we wanted to bring this matter back first to the Facilities Committee and then the full board to make a new plan. In discussion with the Facilities Committee, given this particular circumstance, what the staff team recommended and the Facilities Committee did endorse is to allow, just for this project, have the board delegate authority to the library director to pick specific closure dates as we approach when the equipment will actually arrive. We do anticipate that the equipment will arrive sometime in late calendar year 2022, that would be December, or early '23, hoping not later than January. But given the uncertainty, and we've done all kinds of due diligence as a staff team, we shared it with the Facilities Committee, we've gone to our Building and Equipment Services Department, said, hey, can you call the, the contractor? We've reached out to the manufacturer, we've done all these steps to just see, is there anything, can we take somebody else's HVAC equipment and skip the line? No. And this is very much in line with some other departments, such as Building and Equipment Services, have been experiencing as well. So the staff recommendation, I think it's on the next slide, is to, for this project, not all projects, but just for the Brook Hollow project, to ask the board to consider delegating to the library director a new selection of open and closure dates for the Brook Hollow Branch Library, as we have a more certain timeline for the equipment to come in. And a couple of very important notes I should mention. One, this change doesn't affect the duration of the project, so we do still anticipate it to be a closure of six to eight weeks, so that, that hasn't changed. And then also, of course, we would undertake all the normal interim service planning and providing interim service during the closure, communication plan, which it's always our goal to communicate out at least a month before the closure actually happens, to let everyone know that it's coming. So it doesn't affect those things, but it's unusual in that it would be delegated to the library director.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. Any comments or questions or motions? Probably motions before comments and questions, frankly.
I motion to approve the action to delegate the selection of closure reopen dates to the library director for the Brook Hollow Branch Library HVAC replacement project.
Thank you, Andrea.
I'll second.
So, so my thoughts on that, you know, it's not a standard occurrence, right? It's a special occasion. If we had a library director that didn't walk the walk when it came to overcommunicating and always attempting to make sure that the community is kept well abreast, I would have, I would have concerns about this, but, so, so I just want to, would want to just confirm for the record, as they say, that, that, you know, that we would make every, every attempt to make the information broadcast as far and wide as possible, since this is a deviation from what we've been told, was told to the community before. So those are, those are my comments. Any other comments or questions? Cindy, if you could take us through a roll call vote, please?
Jean Brady? Joanne Harris?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Andrea Sanchez Muniz?
Yes.
Jeremy Landin?
Yes.
Fernanda Cardenas?
Yes.
Just Breke Cor?
Aye.
Marcy Ints?
Yes.
Linda Narren?
Aye.
Judy Cruz? Paul Stahl?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to our last item, item number 16, receive a recommendation from the Budget Committee regarding the city manager's proposed FY 2023 budget for the library department. Action item. I show Kathy is leading that, is that not correct? You sat down.
Maybe. It might be. Well, so I think Just Breke was going to make some comments, but what this action item is about is based on what was shared in the Budget Committee meeting. The item is to sort of deliberate, the board to deliberate and strategize about next steps in the budget process. So just as a refresh, right now what's happening, even including tonight, Dale's about to leave for one of the community district meetings for input on the budget, and then it's all, again, leading up to September 15th, budget adoption by the city council. So as you know, the board usually each year takes certain steps in the process to give ongoing feedback as the decisions are being made.
And Just Breke, did you have any comments that you wanted to make?
Yeah. Should I make them now, Paul, or wait until we have a motion?
What is the proposed motion?
And I, I'm sorry, I can help. We didn't, I apologize for not making it as smooth.
You want a line?
Yeah. So I think Just Breke may be, at this point, maybe a little bit more about the Budget Committee deliberation and its input to the board for next steps.
Yeah. So, we, as Kathy mentioned during our Budget Committee update, we did have, our number one ask was for materials, and as you all know, materials has been an ongoing item that we, we receive a lot of feedback from, from patrons, you know, things being on hold, our availability of items, so that was definitely high on everyone's list. We had asked for a dollar amount, I believe it was $1 million, and we received more than that, which was great news. During the Budget Committee meeting, we also talked about the importance to continue to advocate and to continue to bring the library top of mind, both for citizens and for the city council, outside of a budget bond cycle, which I mentioned previously. But seeing that we received what we were in, we were hoping for, and a little bit more, we're proposing that letter go from the committee, I'm sorry, from the board, and that would come either from me as the committee chair or from you, Paul, just expressing our gratitude to the city manager for, and the city council for their support.
Great. Thank you, Just Breke. That is the committee's recommendation. Do we have a motion? entertain a motion for, for communicating to the city manager our appreciation for the budget?
I'll motion to approve the recommendation from the Budget Committee to, I guess, direct Paul Stahl, or is it, yes, our board president, to craft a letter thanking, thanking city council, or, sorry, city manager, for the budget. You can wordsmith that, however.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Marcy.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to, to acknowledge, you know, the city manager's support for our, for our projects and for our strategic vision and for trying to catch up with our peer cities and, and our library materials, our physical materials, I think that's, I was very happy to see that. So I think this would be a nice, a nice gesture, certainly heading into, letting them know that we, that we, that they have our support as we enter into those budget community meetings. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion or questions or comments?
Yes, Linda?
As part of that budget meeting, and I understood that we were also kind of wanting you to also suggest that there was something else that we would like to have plus, you know, and I don't remember what it was, but it seems like we had something that we also wanted to say, as long as you have money, could we have this too? And I don't remember what that was.
And I think, I think, do you remember? I don't know if she hears me.
Had to do with those digital services, you remember that one? And that we were interested in.
If I'm hearing correctly, the goal with what we're asking the chair to do would include those recommendations in the letter that's going forward to the city manager's office.
Yeah, but it wasn't just saying thank you.
Right. And that's a good point.
By the way.
Because of the, as everyone, I think, has heard bits and pieces of, because of CPS windfall and potentially some, some extra monies in there, you know, lots of people are going to get in line for that, but even so, I think it's, I think it would be appropriate, depending on how we deliver that message, that, that yes, we're very much in support of, of the recommendations, or from the city manager's recommendations, and that should there be money available, that we have already vetted other projects, and we already have a roadmap for, for their initiatives, and list those that feel appropriate, just as a reminder, kind of a tickler to have top of mind. I think that would be appropriate. Good. Thank you all. Any other comments or questions? I don't think so. I don't think so. Unless I saw frowning and shaking of heads in the opposite direction.
And I remember something also about the outreach that was going to be in your letter. About wanting to provide more outreach and getting three positions and stuff like that. That's what I, well, I was there, and that's what I remember.
Yes, that was one, one of the initiatives that was requested as part of the library department's initial request, and was not funded in the proposed budget. And as the chair indicated, it would be indicated in a way that it should there, the additional funds identified somehow, that consideration, the board is asking for consideration of those items, that would, that would be included in there, too.
So I'm looking around here. Anyone that remembers Laura Eckler, you know, she was a master at, you know, kind of the horse trading that goes on in these budget discussions, and, and always, you know, being ready with your other items, just in case something happens, because things happen, you know? Projects that were expected to be on there fall in their face, and then all of a sudden you got a hole, and what else, what else might come next? So, so, yeah. So in affirmation, Joanne, to your comment that Ramiro's saying that, yes, those items would be included in there. Good. Any other questions or comments before we vote, or before I call for a vote? Yes?
I'd like to give recognition to Ms. Jessica Surita for participating and outreach on behalf of the library and participating in the grandparents' Day with Councilwoman Villagrand's event on September 10th. So thank you for always putting the library first, especially out in the community and promoting it. Thank you.
Comments? Cindy, if you'd like to take us through a roll call vote, please? Thank you.
Jean Brady? Joanne Harris?
Yes.
Josie Martinez?
Yes.
Andrea Sanchez Muniz?
Yes.
Jeremy Landin?
Yes.
Fernanda Cardenas?
Yes.
Just Breke Cor?
Aye.
Marcy Ints?
Aye.
Linda Narren?
Yes.
Judy Cruz?
Aye.
Paul Stahl?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We have no other items on the agenda, so I will call this meeting to a close. Thank you all very much. Everyone have a good evening.